Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen Board of Selectmen meeting. Please stand for the salute to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening comments, Mr. Lombard?
Yes. I'd like to thank the Public Works for setting up the Veterans Day speakers for not only the cemetery but for the Veterans Park as well. And I want to thank the citizens that showed up for Veterans Day. We had a very good-sized crowd. I wish there were more. I'm sorry? Oh. I want to thank the Public Works for setting up the Veterans Day platforms and the systems down at the cemetery as well as Veterans Park. We had a good sizable crowd there. I wish there were more. People come out, it was a great day. And thank the American Legion for honoring the veterans and placing the various wreaths down there. They did a great job. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Barrell?
Yes. You know, I wasn't here last week at the meeting, and I saw that Jen had spoke about the artwork down at the Wallfield. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, Heather Goodwin and her sister Carrie Collins do a great job, and they went unrecognized. They go unrecognized, and I want to recognize them for the work that they do. And what they did down there was all volunteer, and they did a great job. They're very artsy, and they love that stuff, and that's what they do. And they do volunteer an awful lot in town, and people should recognize that. I mean, all the barrels in town that they painted over the years, and that building down there, and they're really hard-working girls, and I really, really appreciate them for doing that.
Thank you. My comments are, I'm giving up my comments to Mrs. Barrell. She's on the agenda. Town Hall Clerk to give a voting recap.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm here for. Can you hear me? Okay. So, as you say, I'm here to recap what happened last Tuesday, November sixth, and to say how impressed I was. We had a huge turnout. Polls opened promptly at seven. At that time, I think we had at least thirty-five people waiting in line to cast their votes at seven AM. It went steadily all day long right till eight PM. We have over twenty-seven hundred registered voters, of which two thousand one hundred and one people came in and cast their ballots. But I'm also here to thank people who work behind the scenes, and one being Tommy Mazafaro. Tommy Mazafaro works very hard with me and does a lot of the work that I don't think I could really do. He sets up all the election booths. Not only does he do it for election days, he did it for early voting, which started on Monday, October twenty-second, and finished Friday, November second. But prior to elections, we commandeered the Council on Aging Room. So, the day before, we don't have the luxury of really setting up early, because oftentimes they're having lunch or whatever it is that they need to do that day. And then at the end of their day, Tommy goes in and he breaks down all the tables. He puts away the tablecloths. He does everything that perhaps the director of the Council on Aging asks, as well as myself. So, when I go down, I just have to put pens, papers, voter lists, get the machines, you know, in position and locked up and all of that. But Tommy is a great help to me, and I want to recognize him for that, as well as our fabulous election workers. They worked hard that day. Carol Nelson, just non-stop. She worked with, along me, alongside of me, although I had the luxury of being up in the office and sitting down a little bit perhaps longer than she had. But we worked there till ten o'clock. Then at that point, we have to close down and put everything away. So, people need to understand that those election workers and Tommy Mazafaro, the election workers put on a nice face, they greet people, they help them out, and I'm just here to recognize that for them. So, next time you appear at one of the elections, do give a shout out to them and thank them. Emily Potts is in the audience. She was my prior warden. She did a fabulous job for years. I leaned on her tremendously. So, please recognize these people, and that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could we send a letter of thanks to the election workers and especially Tommy Maz from the Board of Selectmen, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Peggy, before you step away, Peggy-
Sal Lombard has something.
I'd just like to thank you for the excellent memo about Tommy Mazafaro that you sent to us, and I appreciate it very much. I think he's an unsung hero here.
He does.
He does so many things for the town and for you and everything else. And if he's not busy up here, he goes out to the cemetery and other places, but he's a great asset, and I want to congratulate you for sending that memo to us and your election workers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you from all of us.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is congratulations to the Nahant Police Department. Mr. Administrator, would you like to talk about the grant quickly?
Sure. The-
And then I'll read-
Yeah, Chief Dwyer and Tony Parentozzi from the school, our superintendent, worked together to apply for a local law enforcement equipment and technology grant. You know, there was a lot of opportunities to use this money for, the police station and the equipment itself. But Chief Dwyer prioritizing the safety of our, of our school and the community reached directly out to our superintendent and tried to find a way to partner on this one. So, he put, they put this, this money, they're putting it towards camera system upgrade for the Johnson School that's going to feed right to the police station.
Beautiful.
It's about twenty thousand dollars. So, it's an excellent example of our department heads working together and finding alternative revenue, alternative sources of funding to invest in the community. And this one, you know, enhancing the safety of our, of our children in the school, I mean, it's a win-win all across the board.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you. The Nahant Police Department would like to announce they're holding a fundraiser for COPS for Kids with Cancer. The Nahant Police has teamed up with the organization for a second year in a row. COPS for Kids with Cancer is a nonprofit organization that offers financial aid to families who are battling the disease. Members of the Nahant Police are donating money in exchange for facial hair rights. Members of the police who do not participate in growing facial hair also made monetary contributions. If anyone wishes to donate to the cause, they may do so in person at the police station or by going to the department's Facebook page and following the link there. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Ah, that's a nice picture here in the item. Nice phone here. We should send it out to everybody. The other one that I was to read?
Should be under-
A three?
A four.
I don't have A four. Wait a minute. I do. Thank you. At our last Board of Selectmen meeting, we approved the hiring of Nancy Maddox. Nancy will be replacing Penny Moss. Penny has been with the Council on Aging and Linda Peterson for the past three years. She is retiring on November thirtieth, and we want to thank her for her tremendous work and dedication. She will be greatly missed by the staff. Thank you, and thank you from the Board of Selectmen for your work, Penny. Nice letter from us, please. Penny, Penny's a good friend and a hard worker, and I'm sorry to see her go, but, you know, she does other things she does. Right? I agree. Okay, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of November first, two thousand and eighteen, and the executive session minutes from October fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion.
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain, I wasn't there, so I'll- Aye, unanimous?
Aye.
With us, too. Citizens Forum. First up, Linda Pivicek, if you don't mind.
Is it working?
Yes. Yes.
I guess so. I wish to read aloud a letter that was sent to Northeastern University and to the Nahant Board of Selectmen. It is from the Board of Directors of the Brookline Bird Club, which is one of the most active bird clubs in the country with over eleven hundred members from all around Massachusetts. It's written by the president of the club. Dear, well, Mr. Martin from Northeastern and Nahant Selectmen, on behalf of the Board of the Brookline Bird Club, I write to express my deep concern and strong opposition to the proposed expansion of the Marine Science Center at East Point, Nahant. It is my understanding that it is Northeastern's intent to construct an approximately sixty thousand square foot, two-and-a-half-floor building on top of and to the east of the Murphy Brunker at East Point, and possibly a parking area. A project of the size contemplated would have significant negative impact on the habitat and the wildlife, including almost two hundred species of birds each year which live, eat, nest, and migrate at and through East Point. As a migratory site, the damage would not be isolated to East Point but would ripple up and down the eastern seaboard. Since the nineteen sixties, when the U.S. Army finally left East Point, the natural habitat has been in a steady state of rejuvenation and restoration. Today, the East Point area of consideration has been primarily identified as a maritime shrubland, a priority vegetative habitat. It has taken fifty years of undisturbed growth to realize this extraordinary recovery. Rather than raising and developing portions of this site, it should be actively managed to encourage preferred growth through the removal of invasive species and the preservation of the maritime shrubland species. Please do not risk the loss of five decades of nature's work. The current maturing habitat provides respite, shelter, food, and nest sites for many species of birds documented there, including threatened species such as short-eared owl, northern harrier, northern parilla, blackpoll warbler, and morning warbler. In recent years, over a hundred and seventy species of resident and migratory birds have been observed and documented through Cornell University's eBird. Nahant has been designated an IBA, Important Bird Area, by the Massachusetts Audubon Society. It has met the criteria for ornithological significance, including the large fallouts of migrating birds, which would be significantly impacted by the proposed construction. While opposed to any development, the club does wish to recognize the important contributions of Northeastern University of the Study of Marine Biology. Furthermore, should the project go ahead, we would like to offer our input into helping to minimize any disturbance to breeding and migrating birds. Yours very truly, Neil Hayward, President, Brookline Bird Club.
Thank you.
I'll have a copy for you, since you didn't seem to get the copy in the mail-
Right.
-as far as I know.
If you want to give me a copy now, I, yeah, thank you, Linda. So, we haven't seen this yet. Well, it was mailed, but it never made it to here. So, I talked with Linda today. Right.
I got a copy today, which is-
That's a different one. I checked with Linda.
Oh, all right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let's go with that plan, Linda. Copy screen, please.
I don't need it. You need a copy for the negotiations.
Yeah.
Pete, then Jen.
Thank you. Pete Rogers, forty-four Pearl Road, Nahant. I want to apologize before the fact. I've just been through two weeks of daily radiation for brain tumors, and it's affected my speech, and it's also affected my hearing. So, I beg your indulgence, please. I may struggle a bit. I have been attending Concom meetings, and the Concom has a problem. Projects are backed up. Lawyers don't know how to advise their clients. Contractors are reluctant to take on jobs with seawalls and so on and so forth because of the uncertainty of this. The bylaw that was passed is not complete without the rules and regulations. They're necessary so that attorneys can advise their clients and so on and so forth. So, they need to attend to that soon. They have very limited resources. They are meeting virtually every week. They're quite overwhelmed with it. And what they proposed for the hearings was that the people, the seventy-four households in the new yellow zone would be notified. Other than that, they assumed that people in the pre-existing zones were already familiar with their circumstances under the pre-existing wetlands bylaw, which is sort of interesting in that, well, basically, I said, that's unacceptable. They wanted to put it on their Facebook page, the notice of the hearings. Many of us geezers don't have Facebook. Now, everybody in those zones has been affected by this bylaw. I've mentioned before that it can have a negative impact on resale values. I've talked to a lot of realtors and assessors and appraisers, and they assure me that it will complicate things because the more difficult the regulations, the more, the smaller the pool of potential homeowners. It also makes it much more complicated and difficult for people who are already threatened by the oceans to protect their properties. So, last night, I talked to them, and I understand they don't have money for postage. So, I am asking you, because you've got a lot of constituents involved in this, to take a pledge right here, right now, that you will ensure that everybody in the wetlands area is notified by mail about those Concom hearings, so they can understand not just the rules and regulations, but in the preamble to that bylaw, it says these rules will be stricter. Nobody knows what that means in practical terms, and people are frightened and disturbed by it. And they need to explain in plain English exactly what the impact on homeowners will be. And I'm asking you to ensure tonight that those mailings will go out to the affected people, all of them. Are you willing to do that?
Mr. Chairman?
I would entertain a motion that we do a mass mailing to all the houses of Nahant with explanation of regulations, how it will affect them and the town. I would also ask that our attorneys, Copelman and Page, weigh in on this. They're the ones that should be weighing in on the wetlands bylaw and explaining this to people in a simple way, so people can understand it. And that mailing should go out before the hearings start. I think we can do maybe a reserve fund transfer if we need postage, or I know that Peggy's doing the census pretty soon. Maybe if you can send it out, they can go out with the census. It's a possibility, but I would entertain that motion that we get this done.
Are there regs in place?
There's no regulations, and this is a problem. I've been attending the Concom meetings also, and I was on the Concom for a long time. And that's going to be a problem, because if they can't make a decision, people will automatically get their permits.
I'm sorry. First, I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. Okay. So, we have to be very careful of that, and it's obvious that they don't know which way to go. I mean, on a lot of this stuff, because there is no regulations in place, and there has to be. They just, it's got to get done. But people have to know how it's going to affect them, going to Superior Court or DEP or whatever, whatever it is. They need to understand this stuff because it affects them. It affects their property values. Again, and I'll say this again, and it might be a coincidence, but I got a flood insurance bill, and I wasn't very pleased with it the other day. And I don't know if this affected me or not, but I never got one before. Now, I'm getting one. So, I think people have to understand this whole thing and how it's going to, how it's going to unfold and how it's going to work. And it needs, we need to have our attorneys, our attorneys, Copelman and Page, take care of this and work with them, the Concom and us, whoever, and get this letter out as soon as we can, so people can understand it.
What's going to be in the letter?
Well, how it's going to work, how the regulations are going to work.
But there are no regulations.
Well, again, who's going to write the regulations? I'm sure you should write, I'm sure you should write the regulations, and I'm sure you should work with the, with the-
So, because they have no money, we should talk about Copelman and Page assisting them.
Well, here's the other thing. We appropriated that town meeting from the Community Preservation Fund, ten thousand dollars, and it was for delineation of any bylaw or the bylaw, it pertains to this. And what we did was we actually redelineated the town when we did this. When this bylaw passed, it redelineated the town. That money could be used for that, and the planning board should be part of it, too, because that money was for the planning board, the Concom, this ten thousand dollars set aside for this, and I don't see a problem with us using that. I would check with Copelman and Page and ask them and have them, have them work with the planning board and the town to get this done right, so people fully understand the good and the bad.
That makes more sense than sending out a letter saying, you know-
Well, I think Pete's, what Pete's asking for-
Pete's asking for us to work with, I think he's asking for us to inform the town when these meetings are.
Yes, but it-
Because they can't.
And I spoke last night at the Concom meeting. I said, they have to understand what is, what they're up against. People have to understand what's, what they're up against, this whole thing. He's asking to send a letter out to the people in the pink, the yellow, and the orange. I say send it out to everybody. I mean, the whole town. The whole town gets to vote on it, so the whole town should vote, should listen to it.
Could I continue?
Oh, I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead.
Well, let's, let's hold on that motion then.
Okay, let's let him finish, but that motion's on, it's on the table.
All right, but I'm going to return to it before I'm done. I'm very serious about this, and I think people need to be notified by means other than Facebook.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, there's some, there's some other things about this. You will recall the surrounding material from the Attorney General's approval of this It appeared that petitioners before the Concom, if there were complicated issues, could be obligated to pay for consultants, environmental engineers, whatever, at their expense. However, it makes it clear in the Attorney General's commentary that it's a lot more complicated than that, that these people, any funds that are required for that have to be entered in the general fund and have to be dispersed through an appropriation, presumably a town meeting. That's going to tie up people's money potentially for a long time. I want you guys in the FinCom and the Town Council to be able to explain clearly how that is going to work at these hearings. The second, the third thing is, there is this issue of the stormwater bylaw passed in April, two thousand and fifteen. It's Article sixteen in the general bylaws of the Town of Nahant. And it appears to have overlapping zones of authority, that responsibility for that bylaw, permitting responsibility and oversight responsibility rests with the planning board. Fortunately, Richard Snyder and Kristen Kent were both there last night, and I have talked to the planning board and the Concom about resolving this, because it's a, it's a nest of barbed wire right now, and some lawyers are going to get snagged on it, that who is the authority? Hopefully, it won't be a problem. But if it is, both those chairpeople and Dan Scrip have to get involved, because it will involve writing amendments to one or both of the bylaws, and you know that takes time and it takes thought, and they're going to have to get started early on it. So, Richard and Kristen were both amenable to that. Now, a stickier problem comes up that, in consideration of the bylaw itself, the Concom had decided to abandon the part of the bylaw that has to do with aesthetics. That's a perfectly reasonable decision. It's gratuitous, it's unenforceable- It's gratuitous, it's unenforceable, it's subjective, it, it's intellectually lazy, and it should be abandoned. However, the question I have for the Town Council is very precise, and that is, that vote took place, a seven vote margin, but what freedoms do the seven people on the Concom have to tamper with part of that bylaw? Is that open-ended? I've urged them to be very cautious about this because I might just suggest, as long as you're going along with dispensing with this, with parts of this law that are inconvenient, then you might consider abandoning all the people in the yellow zone, all the new people in the buffer zone, which could have the effect of spoiling the whole point of it, which is... It doesn't show in these lights, the yellow zone up here where the bunkers are. This bylaw punishes the innocent. It's got nothing to do with Northeastern at this point. It has to do with one group of townspeople imposing themselves at fear, expense, anxiety. There are people right now whose seawalls are threatened, people who are within feet of having their foundations attacked. This is an outrage. I cannot believe to this day that one group of Nahat citizens so eager to get at Northeastern would be willing to do this to another group of citizens. It's inexcusable. And I want people to think about that. And I would like people, there've been a handful of people who've carried this burden, and I would like to see people in the affected zones show some municipal outrage at what's being done to them. And I want them to gather as neighbors, and I want them to consider hiring an attorney to protect their own interest. This is wrong. And it's not going to go away until it's resolved.
Yeah, we'll get to that after Jen. Let Jen go.
We still have, we have a motion on the table.
Okay, explain the motion.
The motion is to pay for a letter that the Concom will work on with our attorneys.
Okay.
With our attorney, Copelman and Page, to come up with... Oh, the motion is, I'm sorry, for us to pay for the postage and the attorney. If need be, we use that money because we redelineated the town with that bylaw. And it's pretty simple. If you read the language in the, in the town meeting warrant, we can use that for that. And we should hire our attorney to go over this with the Conservation Commission and the planning board, work with them, and pay the postage, pay the whole nine yards, and get these, get this information out to people about this, what the regulations are going to be and when the public hearings are going to be. And I would get on it as soon as, as soon as we can.
I'll second that motion. Discussion?
You should ask me?
Yes.
If I was going to second, I was going to second the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have the chairman.
Would you like to second?
Well, I'd like to second the motion. Yeah, yeah, there's no question in my mind.
But I think what we need to do is we, the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, to have a meeting with the Conservation Committee right away, as well as the Planning Board and our Town Council to answer their questions. There seems to be a lot of confusion about the whole thing. And realizing that the Board of Selectmen have voted, the Board of Selectmen have voted to rescind that article in the April town warrant. You realize that? The Board of Selectmen have voted to put that, a recent, a recension in the town warrant for April. We were going to have the meeting December 1st, remember? Remember that?
I understand that, Chris.
Yeah?
But the problem is, the people need to understand...
Well, they don't, they don't realize it because they, it hasn't affected them yet. There's a few, I don't know what the holdup on the conservation on these hearings, but we should assess and give them help. They seem to be floundering here, and we need to give them direction as well as legal question because right now, the bylaw that, that was passed and, and a couple of months ago, it's been voted in by the Attorney General. So that bylaw, okay, hold on, hold on. You know, we realized that that vote was seven votes either way, and I don't think a lot of people understood that bylaw. They didn't understand it until now. It's starting to affect them because they're repairing their seawalls and other things, and all of a sudden, and they're not going to Superior Court, they've got to go to, you know, the land court, which is a whole different ballgame. And in order to go to that land court or Superior Court, you're going to have to hire an attorney. And that, this is getting, it's getting ridiculous. It's getting very cost, the cost is running up, the numbers are running up for these, for these homeowners. And we need to give them some sort of relief before this, you know, whole thing that was directed at Northeastern, okay? And it's like, it's like, it's Northeastern, in their last plan and presentation to us, they had the, they presented to us a complete new package, okay? And they had that bylaw already shaded in, okay, in the area of the conservation land. So we've seen that, and they, their lawyers have already presented it to us with their bylaw all shaded in in these construction zones, what they want to do. Of course, we're meeting with them shortly, and of course, we continue to say no, okay? Because, but they're, they're pushing, they're pushing hard. And we've got to, you know, it's, 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 that zoning bylaw did nothing to prevent Northeastern. It just did nothing. All it did is hurt the homeowners that are living along the shore are, are in that new plane, floodplain. And it's, it's a shame. Because all of a sudden, they realized they're in the floodplain, and they realized they weren't in the floodplain, and now they have to get flood insurance and et cetera, et cetera. So we promised, committed to vote that article in, in for April, to let people come in, take a ballot, and you'll have a ballot in your hand, and once they cross you off the election, and you'll have a chance of going up or down to rescind that bylaw. Because the bylaw did nothing for Northeastern. Believe me, when you see the new plan, we should show that to them within the month. And all it did was, you're right, Pete, it hurt the people along the shore. And the seawalls that have been cracked and everything, you know, and you're trying to, you're trying to get them fixed, and all of a sudden, now you've got to jump through hoops, and you've got to hire all these attorneys, and it's getting very, very costly.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me a minute, Pete. Could you sit for a minute? I want to hear from Kristen first, and then you can get up.
I haven't finished yet.
Oh, well, finish.
Because I'm getting the runaround. And I have made a simple request, and frankly, I don't have enough time left to wait until April. This is a very simple request. The affected homeowners should be notified in mail, by mail. Are you people going to support that and enable it, or aren't you?
Uh, excuse me.
Can I call the question?
No, 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 no.
No, no.
No, no. I got this, guys. Thank you, Pete. Could you sit down, please? Kristen, could I hear from you, please, before we vote?
My name's Kristen Kent. I'm the Chair of the Conservation Commission. We're a seven-member board with a $750 budget. So, you know, we don't have attorneys, we don't have mailing, you know, money to do mailings with. The reason that the regulations have been delayed is because we were waiting for you guys to make a decision with regard to a special town meeting, if we were going to have one in December. It seemed unwise to use town resources to do something that may be repealed by December. So that's what held up that. To this point, we've had one filing that fell in the yellow zone. We've only had one. Every other person that's filed has gotten their permit. It hasn't held anything up. The only thing they've been held up by is DEP because DEP has a microscope on Nahat because historically, we haven't followed the rules. So that's what's been holding up seawall repairs, unfortunately. And you do need an engineer for a seawall repair. That's just, I mean, it's to protect the homeowner as much as the town. So that's what's held up, held us up to this point. We want to enact regulations. You know, we've been put in a situation where we have to act on this. Something needs to happen. We are open to notifying residents, absolutely. We want people's input. What we don't want to do is keep re-debating the merit of the bylaw. You know, we have it, and as of right now, we need to move forward. If the town decides otherwise, that's fine, but we have a bylaw, and we need to create regulations to accompany it. We would love to have support of legal counsel from the town. We need it. We don't need a consultant, we need an attorney, and we would love that support.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Kristen, before you, before you sit down, if you shout out money on the budget, you should go to Tony and ask him for a budget transfer. We can do that.
Okay.
For a mailing, anything like that. And if you need legal advice, we can send the, our Town Council and his team down there to see you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, so that, you know, I mean, anytime you request that, don't, you know, I wouldn't wait to a selectmen's meeting. We can do, Tony can, he has the authorization to send that to you immediately. And so I would not, you know, hesitate.
Okay.
And I'm going to, after all these motions are passed, I'm going to ask for a joint meeting with you, the Conservation, the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, as well as the Planning Board on this whole thing so we get everyone on the same page. I think Pete's got a very good point about these people that are in this new zone, and I make sure they're notified. We're going to notify them. We're going to send the letters out and make sure they understand if they got a, they are going to, a letter, explain exactly what this bylaw means to them personally, okay?
I mean, the unfortunate thing is the Commission has been tasked with a major task, and it's an awkward situation. You know, we don't have, we don't have open support from the Board of Selectmen, so we don't know what the right thing to do is. So now that, you know, if you're willing to give us funds, then I think that would be incredibly helpful for us.
We'll give you whatever you need.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead, please. It's a simple, my, my motion was pretty simple. We're going to give them the money. We have $10,000, Richie, in that budget. For the redelineation of the, of the, really, of the town, and that's what we did. The simple, the motion is pretty simple. We are, we're going to pay for it, we're going to use the funds from that because I believe, if you check with Town Council, we can use the funds for that to work with the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen so people are aware of what this means to them. It's really, really simple. It's got nothing to do with seawalls, and I disagree with you, Kristen. As soon as that bylaw passed, you should have got on it. You shouldn't have waited until December 1st to see if we were going to have a meeting. It didn't matter.
I disagree.
When, when it passed, you get on it. And if it, if it, if you write the regulations and it fails, oh, well, you know, if it goes away in December, but it didn't. So it just, it's more time-consuming, and I watch the meetings, I've been going to the meetings, and I disagree with you. There has been some, just because they're not in the yellow zone, it's, it's kind of that cloudy area, do we give them a permit or don't we give them a permit? Because there was a couple of, I witnessed two of them, that you couldn't, you really didn't know, they didn't know what to do. And I'm not saying it's bad, you're not a lawyer.
I just disagree.
I don't expect you to be a lawyer.
I disagree.
We need to have a lawyer do this. So my motion's simple, and I, I...
Well, in the beginning, it wasn't that simple.
Well, it is. It pretty, it pretty is. So, pretty much is. So my motion is that the town...
It's already been called, I'll call the question. Those in favor?
Just one point or, don't be so specific to using the 10 grand for the Planning Board until we have Bond Counsel review that we can actually use those funds. Just, I would just make a motion to send, to do the mailing, and then we'll find the appropriate funds for it.
Well, and we...
I don't know yet if we can actually use that money for...
As Town Council, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not specific to the Planning Board, I don't believe. It's specific to redelineation of the town, and that's what happened. It was redelineated. It's, we changed the maps again.
Okay, okay. So we'll vote on the mailing, and would you look into the rest of that? The Town Administrator? Because we can't go by what we think it is.
Can we call the question, please?
Well, Mr. Chairman?
One more comment.
Mr. Chairman, I, I still understand, are we just going to notify the people that are in the new floodplain zone? Are we going to notify the whole town?
Whole town.
The whole town?
Yeah.
Okay. So that letter, that letter has to be written.
I mean, people that were in the white got to vote on it, so why shouldn't the whole town be involved?
Well, that's fine. I have no problem with that. Mail the whole town. I have no problem with it. I want to make sure it's a clearly defined letter, explaining, and we need to have Town Council actually write that as a legal opinion so they have that in their hands, and then give, make sure a copy of the Conservation, you know, so you can review that at the same time.
Have Jeff or Amy look at that tomorrow, right away, see if we can use that money.
Well, we're going to send them out right away.
There's $10,000 there that we can use for that.
Well, I think the Commission should set the dates of the meeting first so that the information can go out in the letter so we don't have half the information going out.
Right.
We want to, also, your comment about the Selectmen not supporting the Conservation, anytime you've come in front of the Board, we've always supported you, and we always will continue to support you.
Thank you.
Okay? I want to, I want you to realize that. If you have any questions, you can pick up a phone, and don't wait to a meeting, you know. We're available by phone, and, and Tony can, you can call Tony. He can, he gets ahold of us every day. Not every day, but several days. So, you know, but, so don't wait, you know, especially if you need money. Not that we have a lot, but we don't even have to, this $10,000 is fine, but it might cost more than $10,000. We have a reserve fund that's still, you know, it's $150,000, I believe, and we can tap into that for, to pay for this postage and the letter and the, and the legal opinion, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous vote. As Chairman, I have to inform, inform the town that we have not voted yet. We've discussed rescinding in the April town meeting.
That's right.
We, we haven't voted yet. We talked, the three of us talked about it.
You, what you did, you rescinded your original vote to have a December town meeting, and that's it. So there's still opportunity to add that article to the April town meeting, but it technically hasn't been done yet.
Right.
Well, I move, Mr. Chairman, that one of the articles for the upcoming April town meeting is the, to rescind that bylaw. I, I made that motion tonight.
I'll second for discussion. Discussion. We wanted to make it official.
Well, I mean, we, the articles have to be in by the end of January. This is November, and you've got Thanksgiving, Christmas. By the time, you know, these articles all have to be situated, and, and the order of those articles for the special, for that annual town meeting is very crucial. Where we're going to put that article, and it's, I don't know where, what's the best, but that's going to take some time. And I, I want to make sure that the Board is in favor of this, you know?
Further discussion?
I think we should wait.
Wait till January?
I mean, it's either, why wait at all?
Excuse me, excuse me. It's not yellow, please.
It's yes, it's...
I'll just cancel the meeting. I'll just cancel the meeting. I would. And you can run it.
Well...
Although, further discussion?
Okay.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's on you, Jen. Jen, sorry you had to wait.
I'll be quick. I honestly just have four quick things. First of all, I see later on on the agenda, there is to approve a road race for, I think it's June 19th. I would just ask in the future that something goes out somewhere, whether it's Facebook or an all-call, just notifying citizens that there's going to be a road race this coming weekend. Because it is, it does impact people's travel to get out of town. Sometimes roads are blocked, or, you know, you're stuck waiting for runners to go by. And I enjoy having the races. I'm not saying don't have the races. But just some heads up so people could leave 10 minutes early, you know, or make the appropriate arrangements to get out of town, so they can be where they need to be on time. Secondly, the recycling on Sherman Ave was not picked up today. It is being graded or whatever to be paved, and I think that's why, because they did do some work today. But I'm wondering if the truck could go down Sherman tomorrow and pick up the houses that weren't picked up?
We'll make sure a Public Works crew could open, picks that up.
Thank you. Third, I just want to take a minute and recognize our teens in town. Over at Swampscott High, right now, we're very fortunate. We have the girls Swampscott Varsity Soccer Team. They just won the D3 North Championship. It's the first time in the school's history that the girls soccer team has won that championship. Sadly, they did lose last night in the semifinals for the state playoffs. But they played a great team. They've played a great season. And there's seven Nahant girls on that team, so. And then for the boys, the boys football team, the Varsity Team, which eight Nahant youths are part of that team, they just won the D5 North title. So they are the D5 champs. And they play this Saturday for their semifinals state championship in Hanover at 4:00. Okay? And then finally, this weekend at the Nahant Village Church, we have Gratitude Sunday, which we have invited all the elected officials, town offices, volunteers, to please come join us, so that we can appreciate everybody who volunteers and does work for the town. Service starts at 10:30. And if you're not a volunteer in town, you're welcome to come and enjoy the service and show your support for those in town who do work so hard for us every day. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Jen? So the boys, the boys are going to go to the, they're going to the Super Bowl?
I believe they, they have to win the game on Saturday, I believe, which is against Situate.
And then they'll go to, they'll play Gillette?
Yes.
Yeah, it's really...
It's a big thing. They haven't won, I think, since early 2000, so...
Yeah, my son's team won the Super Bowl.
And the coach is from Nahant. Bobby Serino is a Nahant resident over in Little Nahant, so...
That was Frankie's coach. And the other, the girls?
The soccer team.
Randy Girls, huh?
Yes.
You want to mention their names, go right ahead.
Okay, on the girls, we have Sky Bascon, Grace and Sophie DeGrandy, Molly Franzhalp, Grace and Maddie Hudson, and Nikki Rosa. I hope I didn't miss anybody. For the boys, I have Anton Vasquez, Nick Reiser, Ryan Henry, Cole Hammernick, Thomas Frizzoli, Jordan Cummins, who is not from Nahant anymore, but he grew up here. He moved to Swampscott in the last couple of years. Xavier Bascon, Jake Bartram, also started out here in Nahant, but now lives in Swampscott, I believe. And our coach, Bobby Serino.
And Colin, Colin, what's his last, uh...
Colin. On the girls or the boys?
No, the boys. The football team.
Oh, Cole Hammernick?
No, no.
I could have missed one or two. These were the ones that I...
Well, his dad won the Super Bowl back in 1973, so it'd be nice to see if they, if they win.
Yep, so... Thank you.
Okay, do you, just a quick...
Thank you.
Yeah. The, the road race isn't until June, so I just didn't want people to think that it was happening this weekend. But I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your comment, and, you know, we're trying to do a better job at communicating these things out to the community.
And one last thing, Tony. I, you know, we need to talk to the rubbish company again, because I picked up the trash for three or four people last week. And I don't, you know, they're friends, but they really have to, they have to step up.
I'm actually upset to hear that, because we were on the phone with them quite a bit this week, knowing that we had the paving going on around town about those specific roads and trying to get them in there before the paving company came down. So we'll get DPW down there tomorrow. Okay.
Hi, Christine. Let's go on Citizens Forum.
Hi, Christine Johnson-Lisio. I know we're on your report tonight for an update for the lowlands drainage issues. I don't know if we're able to ask questions then, or if this is the time.
Basically, the report that I had emailed you about is what I'm going to say. So if you want to ask questions now, that's fine.
Okay, great. So I know we have a lot of neighbors here tonight, and I thank you for your email, which did give us a really thorough update of the work that's been done so far. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their support and the DPW. They've been really responsive. I think what we would be very interested in hearing is really some projected timelines for finishing the project. I think that's the one thing that the neighbors are most concerned about, that we have at least some idea of when the project is going to be completed, which has not been part of the update. So I don't know if you have any sense of when the drainage pipe will be open and functional.
May I?
Absolutely.
We have, this has had, this whole article, as you know, because we worked together, which had a lot of roadblocks, hit a lot of bumps. When the town, interim Town Administrator came on and I became chairman, the Monday I became chairman, I met with him and said, "I want immediately something done down there." And I hounded him like a hawk. And that was a roadblock number one, because I pushed for the DPW to go in and find the pipe. And what we got in return was a letter from DEP to cease and desist. "You can't go on that beach, you ruin the berm." My whole thing was, you fix a berm, you go in and you find the pipe, but... So we got a stop order, and then I received calls from the people in the neighborhood saying that Tuta Beach was going to be done before your area, and I came flying up. And I'm not sure if it was this guy or Jerry Perry, but I went after them and said, "Absolutely no way, because Tuta Beach will be done." And they're starting that, and that's part of his report. So I had to put up and talk to people in the neighborhood about things that weren't really happening. And then our final roadblock was the fact that we are six feet from getting to a wall, concrete wall, in one of the neighbors' yards. And it's, it's a roadblock. And so, I mean, there's no one more upset at this, well, wait, you people are more upset because you had to live it. I know that.
So can I ask, what is the roadblock?
Well, he can talk about that. But I'm just saying, I'm just saying it's, it is a roadblock. And we have to take that pipe, the pipe's there, it's, well, he'll talk more about it. But we need to get that pipe cleaned all the way out through. And they finally got a group onto the beach there, and they couldn't find where the pipe came out. So it's, it's going to take time. What I'm saying, Christine, is the Town Administrator will do a better job, but we can't give a timeline yet because we're still waiting to get moving.
Right, we were moving forward, and we were very excited.
I was very excited.
But then things kind of came to a stop. So what is the stop?
Okay, go ahead. Can I, can I just say something? I don't, I don't see a roadblock, personally. I think that what we have down there is, we have an easement.
Correct.
And that we should be digging that up and finding the pipe, the broken piece, and replacing it. We don't need to go on the beach.
No.
There's no need to go on the beach. If that pipe is open to the beach, it's pretty simple. You just reconnect it. I don't see that as being an issue. I would suggest that we speak with Town Council to see what our options are, and I would do it this week, because the winter's coming.
We know the floods are coming.
I have, I have been, personally, been up to my waist in water down there. And I, I, again...
And we are taking the water for the whole town, from the golf course all the way down. We're draining to us.
Easy to get done now. I personally want to see, you know, and I'd like to at least try to get a meeting together soon so that we can, we can resolve this and get, and get this done.
Is it a matter of funding?
Uh, excuse me, he said, "resolve this." That's a roadblock.
I don't see, I don't think there is a roadblock.
Well, of course you don't.
There is no roadblock. It's just, I disagree. There's no roadblock. There's, we have, we have an easement. When you have an easement, you can pretty much do what you need to do to remedy the situation, and that's...
Maybe I can shed some light on the situation.
Thank you, thank you.
The short answer is, unfortunately, I can't, we don't have a timeline. And I would never want to commit to a timeline that we, that we can't achieve. But I'll explain to you why we're where we are. Last April, and I'll also say that the Board of Selectmen have been, this has been a huge priority of theirs. I mean, from the first minute I got into the, into this role, I was told to make this a priority. And of course, being from that area of town, it was, there was no hesitation from me. Because I've seen what's going on down there, too. But we have $175,000 appropriated for three efforts to combat the flooding issues in that area of town. Those efforts are a pump, dredging, and also clearing that outfall pipe. So it's not a lot of money to spread across all three efforts. We also have a $20,000 grant for mosquito control to do some dredging in that area. And we also have another $10,000 grant for Heritage Trail, which would be dredging as well. The issue is that we're trying to balance that $175,000 so that not one of those efforts takes over the entire budget. Each one of those efforts are vital to helping the situation. So we have some quotes on a portable pump. We could do an eight-inch pump, we could do a 10-inch pump. The preference would be a 10-inch, but it costs a lot more money. And then it pulls from the funding for the other two efforts that we have. So now we have, with the outfall pipe, what we're looking, what we've done so far is, initially, we camered the pipe, and it actually, you know, we got to about 10 feet shy of the seawall. It actually looked in very good condition, but we couldn't go any further. So then we went on to the beach to do some, some shooting grades and probing, and we dug down, but we couldn't find the pipe on the beach side. So the next step was to jet that pipe and try and clear it and get out to the beach and see where it popped out on the other side. We got about six feet short of the seawall, and the, you know, a hole was created, basically because the pipe was broke at that point, and the jet came out, and it hit earth, and it caused the ground to collapse in that area. So we do have an easement, and we have every right to maintain that pipe. The, the issue is, how do we access that area of the property? We could go in through the easement that we have, but it's only 10 feet. And there is, it's very tight for a piece of equipment necessary to do this job. So, you know, trying to avoid potential issues with a fence and a tree and putting weight on the existing pipe, which would then potentially cost more money down the road, we're trying to access the easement from another angle of the homeowner's property. Naturally, because we're so close to the seawall, which the homeowner owns, you know, there's some concern about making sure that we don't hurt that seawall as well, from our side and from the homeowner. So we're working with the homeowner on coming, coming up with a plan of attack. So that's what it is. And it's really just been, we, there are other options for us to take, but my concern is that those options could lead to increased costs and then pull from the cost for the pump and from the dredging. And so we actually are meeting with the homeowner in the next week, I believe, depending on the holiday, but that's, that's our next step.
I think, I just, I think that, I think the pipe is the priority. And the pump, I personally put three eight-inch pumps in that, in that, in the manhole, and it didn't even put a dent in that water. I mean, the pipe is, it's gravity-fed, and it's 20 inches. It's decent size. I think that draining that, that whole area, making sure that all those manholes are connected to that one area is going to help more than any pump will do. Then, of course, you can, you can get the pump later. But I think the most important thing is finding that pipe. It's, I was there. It's right, right close to the seawall. I mean, you could almost hand dig it and to see where it's broken.
We don't know, we don't know, after where that jet hit the ground and that hole was created, we don't know what, what the pipe does after that. So we have to dig that up and see if the pipe still goes through the seawall, or if it doesn't, and make sure that it does.
Right. Okay.
So money has been mentioned, and also the fact that all of the drainage in the area is impacted by this. And we have drainage right now that goes nowhere. We have drainage that goes into neighbors' yards and goes nowhere. So I would like to suggest that in addition to opening the pipe, which I think is the number-one priority, because we could always get a pump in a storm and drop it in, like we did this past storm, that we entertain some kind of an article for April Town Meeting to, I know we talked about long-range plans and short-term plans in your email, but we've been waiting a really long time. This has been 30 years. And so it's time to address the drainage overall in our area. I'm on the MVP Committee. I'm working to try and get grant money. We're doing the best we can, but at the same time, I feel the town has a responsibility to the residents of the Lowlands. It's been a long time coming. Our drainage pipes go nowhere. They sit with water in them, and we're sitting in a bowl, and we need someone to pull the plug so that we can drain. And it's not rocket science, it's a pipe. So I'm just asking, if we don't have the funds with the 175, that the Selectmen would support an article for April Town Meeting to add additional funds. But we need to address this. It's people's health, it's their property, it's their quality of life, it's their real estate values, and it's been a long, long time. And we're patient, and we're willing to work with you, but we do need to move forward. And we need to have a completion date. Would you entertain an article for April Town Meeting?
Oh, I will. I just want you to know that this also started with a bump in the road, with us being told, you and me, being told that the MVP was the way to go. And we pushed this article, or else it would have been another year. And so you can bet, you can bet that I'll be pushing, I wrote that article...
I know you did, T, and I appreciate it.
Over the phone with Jerry Perry, and he was telling me, "No, you can't do this." I said, "It will be done."
I know he was.
And because I went over Fox Hill Road and saw the flood...
And we certainly appreciate all you have done.
Three days later, no, no, I'm not doing it for that. I'm just saying that this is something that has to be done.
It does. It's been a long, long time.
To the point, I talked with, Kristen left, but I talked with Chris Howard, and it was like, "Let's just bulldoze right through and put the pipe in." But you can't, because you have to go through all the legal things.
But Kristen is taking on his property, water from the whole town, and it goes nowhere. And we're all taking water.
Oh, Kristen didn't leave.
It's, it's got to be addressed. It's, it's a major issue for our neighborhood, and...
We have the right guy here with the Town Administrator.
I know we do, and I have faith in Tony. He's been really great in communicating with us. But if there's not enough funding, maybe we need to go back to our, the Town Meeting.
Enzo's absolutely right on that the pipe is most important.
It is the most important thing.
We have to find a way, and he's, he's working, believe me. He hears from us quite frequently.
Our engineers, the outfall pipe is definitely the number-one priority. It is a gravity pipe, and in a scenario like last storm that we had, when we had multiple consecutive... multiple consecutive high tides in a row, the pump was the only thing that was getting water out of there.
Oh, yeah.
At that point. The gravity pipe had been clear, according to our engineers, would not have made a difference, because it was so, the water level was just so high for so, such a consecutive amount of time. That doesn't make it less of a priority, but I would say that right now, I am not concerned about the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars being able to accomplish both goals. We're not at that point yet. If we are, I am completely on board with um, trying to find additional funds to, to solve that. And part of the update that Christine was talking to that I didn't mention was, we are looking at an M A P C Resiliency Accelerator Grant of fifty thousand dollars to hire a consultant to come in and study the existing storm drains in that area, find out the sizes, the pitches, the condition of them, and make suggestions as to how to improve that entire system. Hopefully, the plan would be then to use that, the results of that study with the, uh, towards the M V P program, and finally get some funding potentially for construction, design and construction of, of some type of improvement.
Is it, just with fifty grand, just cover a consultant? Or could we use part of that for uh, actual drainage?
I don't think that would be enough to do actual construction. I mean, I think...
Well, I'm just, some of it, you know.
You know, personally, I just feel that, you know, for a long time, it's been, let's put money at a problem that we think is the issue, and we haven't taken this longer term, higher, you know, wider approach to the issue, and that's why I think it's important to have a study be done. And in the meantime, use the funding that we have appropriated to accomplish the goals that we think, you know, might make it, make a significant difference. And I don't, I'm not saying that they won't, but I think it's important that, you know, I, we are talking about clearing the outfall pipe from Castle Road to, to the beach, but I don't know what the condition is of the pipes heading to that point.
No.
So, you know, that, that's what I'm talking about when I say taking a bigger approach to it. At the same time, though.
And by the way, I disagree with the engineer, because I was there. And when you have water coming in const, I mean, one after another after another, if you keep, by the time we got down there with those pumps, it was too late.
It was too late.
If you can keep up, if you can keep up with, if that drain pipe can keep up with some of it, it would drain quite a bit of it down. I mean, I watched the water actually go the opposite way in the ditch and come towards.
I was there.
Towards us, right. So, so, and, and I was.
I was there with Christian as the water was coming over.
I think if that pipe is connected, which I don't think is a real big deal, um, it, it will, it will definitely help during a major, major uh, um, problem.
I'm just making the point that I'm trying to.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
Keep a balance of all three priorities.
Right. Now, I, I, you know, when the budget was four hundred and seventy-five thousand, I said it then, it's not enough.
Right.
And I, and I still say, that ditch running from Castle Road to Kelly Greens used to split like this. The problem is, if you notice Doggy Beach and the inbound lane, those grass sand dunes, they were never that high. The sand is coming from Revere and it's coming in, it buried that, that pipe. That pipe is buried. Does that used to drain on a natural flow down by, wow, it's Chris Howard's house. The break was just about Ward, Ward Road, and it'd go out the other way on a very, you know. But you've got to clean, we've got to get a grade all in there and get those ditches cleaned. That's your problem. Now ditch is going to be cleaned from.
It's really not the problem, Richie.
No, 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 but let, let, let me finish. They're never going to find that pipe. That pipe is so deep. You need to put, you need to put a pump down there at the Castle Road and Fox Hill Road, and we need to pump that out with a new pipe. And that's what you need to do to pump, because the water.
We do need a pump.
Excuse me. I'm sorry?
I agree. We do need a pump.
You need a pump because the sand dunes and everything, it's just too high. You'll never get the flow like you used to. And your, but your flow's got to go from the major pump station, okay, down at Lowlands. It's got to go toward Kelly Greens. And the only way that's going to go to Kelly Greens, it has to be dug out, because it's coming, it's reversing its way. It's coming back towards you.
It's uphill, and the water's never going to go uphill. It's uphill. It just is not going to go that way, Richie.
But you've got to put a pump down there to pump it out.
It's much more efficient to just pump it right out into the harbor, and that pipe goes through the wall and into the harbor. It doesn't go under the sand. That's what the engineers had told us.
Yeah.
So I appreciate your support, Tony. Thank you.
I, I, I just think we need to put an article, and I think.
I agree. I, I'd work with you on it.
Just to give you back, you need probably, I'm not going to engineer and everything, but you probably need another hundred thousand dollars to finish this whole project and get, and get, get the whole thing correct. Now, I'm, I'm using that as an estimate based on the hundred and seventy-five thousand, because that's, that, that's a, a lot of dredging and mosquito control. It was supposed to be in there every year, but they didn't come.
They haven't.
And it's been a, it's one fiasco after another. That's why you're getting all this flooding. Okay? It's very simple. As I, I live there, and we've, I've never seen the flooding like at, at the end of Fox Hill, and, and I know, we used to skate on that ditch all the way to Kelly Greens. And that ditch would go that way and by Chris's house, which is Pastorino's house.
Yes.
Okay? And Mrs. Brown's house, the yellow house next door, it'd go all the other way.
So it goes nowhere right now. It doesn't go out by Christian, it doesn't go to the ditch, and it doesn't go out the seawall. It goes nowhere.
That whole beach, Doggy Beach, is up like this, and it's coming back at you. You need a pump, a major pump, ten inch line, pumping that right out to back. But I, you know, it's got to be dug up, and you've got to get the, you've got to, you've got to get through to the neighbors. You've got to get through that.
So I'd be.
Run it out somehow. I mean, because if we don't get that pump down there to pump out that water, you're still going to get flooding.
But it sounds like from what Tony's saying, there is enough money to finish this initial project. That's not what the hangup is right now. So, yeah. So thank you.
One final?
Yes.
Um, to go back to the original date that we talked, um, the engineer was on the line too, and he was telling me, Enzo made me think of it. Oh, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the pump. And I went, oh, baloney. I said something worse, but I, I was like, no, we got to get that pipe, whatever it is, cleaned out. So that's the most important thing.
Thank you.
Suggestion?
Mm-hmm.
That um, somebody in your neighborhood be the person to talk with the town administrator?
Mm-hmm.
Not Enzo, not T, not Richie?
Right.
Um, because we're not supposed to converse among ourselves, really, and, and he's the boss. Well, we're his boss.
Will do. Will do. He actually, Tony emailed me and asked me to share with the neighbors, and we've done that. So we really appreciate that.
And it would be a much better way to get communication up.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, we're still on Citizen Forum. We're going to set a record.
I'm going to be very brief. I just want to remind everybody that on Saturday night is the art, art auction, which will be held in this hall. It's from six thirty to nine thirty. The uh, what? Oh, it's snowing.
Let it snow, let it snow.
It's snowing, people.
Sorry. I thought there was a problem. Anyway, we, and then on Sunday, the art will still be in the room, and people are welcome to come. It's a free night, a free afternoon from one to four, I believe, and um, from twelve to three.
We work together. It takes a village.
Anyway, we just want to announce it, and we hope everybody will come and enjoy it.
Thank you. Okay. New business. Approve Kip Massachusetts Inc. Ten K Road Race, June ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Kip Massachusetts Ten K Road, Road Race, June ninth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second it. Discussion. Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the annual tree lighting at Town Hall, December first, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Discussion.
Well, I think Santa Claus will be here.
Santa Claus will be here? Good.
Tony, Tony gave him a call, and I said he'd be here.
We can have Santa Claus. Maybe we'll have a meeting and have him in the Citizens Forum.
Yeah.
What the heck, you know? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the annual turkey shoot, November seventeenth, sponsored by the Hart Lions.
I'll second it.
Is that down the coast guard?
That's at the back of the public works.
Okay. I'll second it. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town Administrator report.
We have one.
Oh. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a one day liquor license for the art show event, November seventeenth at Town Hall.
Second. Discussion. Seeing, hearing, and those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Um, Town Administrator report, and during your port, report, would you um, talk about the Thanksgiving hours that you've come up with, please?
Yes. So, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Tax rate. I announced this at last, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, but wanted to repeat it. Our tax rate of ten dollars and ninety-one cents was approved by the Department of Revenue, and so real estate tax bills went out on November first and are due December third. Also, water bills went out on October thirtieth and are due November twenty-ninth. Water bills were more than typical reading this time because there was an extra month included, and the water and sewer rates did increase a little, and also consumption typically tends to increase over the summer months. Um, if you, if anyone has any questions about their bills, please do not hesitate to contact the Town Hall. Uh, storm damage, the first one I wanted to talk to you about was Tudor Beach. So this week, we met with the contractor for the Tudor Beach Storm Damage Repairs. They will begin mobilizing onto the site the week after next, but depending on their current job, they may finish up early and be able to mobilize next week. Um, work will begin on the Valley Road side of Tudor Beach, and they will work their way down and eventually to the wharf.
Nice.
The work at the wharf includes repointing the wall under the parking lot that leads to the wharf building. So that would be the left side of the ramp, and then under the wharf, and then um, on the side of the Dory Club.
If I may, that's what you were pushing.
Yes.
Um, this work will be happening between the hours of seven AM and seven PM, unless otherwise advanced notice. Uh, there will be a six foot fence surrounding the work site with some equipment remaining on site, um, inside the fence. And during work hours, there could be additional vehicles and equipment on site, but we will keep them off the road so not to interfere with auto or pedestrian traffic. Um, the DP, the DPW will remove memorial benches that are in the area temporarily, so to avoid any potential damage. And uh, the proposed schedule has the job completed by the early spring, but with winter weather, um, it could have an impact. So it's really good news to see that that work is, is getting done.
Can I just, what about the old one?
We are.
Harret and Fallon.
Right. We have, uh, hasn't been, the engineering for that hasn't been sent out yet, but we have that included on our damage inventory, which is going to be finalized tomorrow with FEMA.
Oh, good. Uh, because there's one, I know there's one guy out there that needs to do something with his, with some of the boulders out there. Uh, he lives right in the water. I think it's Fallon. Um, I spoke to him at a con con meeting, and he, um, again, they couldn't, they couldn't make a decision on it. And he's concerned about this winter because a lot of that, of the road, eroded, the boulders were moved, and um, he doesn't want to lose his house. So need to get, step up on that too. So keep me, keep me abreast of that too, would you?
Will do.
Thanks.
Um, Castle Road was my other update, but I think.
Yeah, we've, we've beaten that one, so that's good. And good for them.
Um, the benefits fair, um, the Town Hall staff got together and put together a benefits fair for town employees um, this, a week ago, and it was an, it was extremely successful. A number of employees were able to come up here. We had AFLAC, we had um, Essex Regional Retirement, we had, and we had the Smart Plan, uh, folks from each of those companies here in the Town Hall. And so they were here for a few hours, had some one-on-one opportunities with the, with um, employees of the town, and they got to either sign up or get updates as to where their, um, you know, partnership with those companies uh, was. So just wanted to commend um, Kim Koscheleke and Bobby Joe Blair for working on that and putting it together and organizing it, and also commend everyone that came up and participated in it. And you know, we look forward to doing it again next year and even expanding it and making it bigger.
Would you give us, give them a thanks from us too?
Will do.
Please.
And then the holiday hours, uh, so next week being Thanksgiving on Thursday. Uh, Wednesday, the Town Hall will be closed to the public and will be used for internal purposes only. Thursday and Friday, the Town Hall will be closed completely.
I, I commend you on that. That's terrific, to get caught up, have the staff here. That's terrific. Thank you for that.
It's a good idea, Tony.
Thank you.
Make sure they get let go early.
Veterans Day recap, if Richie, could you do that, please?
Sure. Last Friday, the Johnson School, uh, the fifth and sixth grade classes hosted the annual uh, Veteran Day event. It was a very nice meet and greet, followed by the songs, poems, and call readings. Uh, I want to thank you to the students and the faculty. Peggy Silver was the one that initiated that years ago, and it's been carried forward even since her retirement, and it's a very nice thing. And I know the veterans appreciate, especially the young students at Johnson School, makes them fairly proud to be a veteran in the service to the country, and they made that. And I've already discussed the ceremony at the American Legion conducted at World War One Monument, and at Veterans of the Monument, and then Veterans Park, uh, community where it was a very good turnout. I would, I'd like to see more people come down, especially on Veterans Days. It's kind of a holiday and um, support the Legion and the, uh, the veterans that honor the war dead, both World War One, Two, Vietnam, Korea, Vietnam, and uh, the latest conflicts that we've got going now. And uh, they did an excellent job.
Thank you. Um, Thanksgiving trash and recycling.
Okay. Due to the Thanksgiving holiday, trash and recycling collection will be on a one day delay and will occur on Friday and Saturday as opposed to Thursday and Friday. So if you're a Thursday customer, put it out on Friday, and then if you're a Friday customer, you'll put it out on Saturday. And if they forget it, that's terrific.
I'll have Tony pick it up.
Figure that out. That was great.
Winter parking ban.
Okay. The winter parking ban goes into effect December twenty-first to March twentieth. Residents with hardships that need to apply for a parking waiver can pick up their applications from the police department on or after December first, two thousand eighteen. So I encourage people to do that so they don't get tickets and do it the right way and um, um, show proof of hardship.
And I, I will not mention the blue lights that we should be putting up instead of the parking. I won't mention it.
And Tony, who put these books together?
Uh, Mary and Bobby Joe.
They're great. They did a great job.
Right.
You may want to mention tonight's going to snow, so we, everyone can keep their cows off the street so they can sand and blow tonight.
It's snowing right now, right?
No, it's going to be like two to four inches. I, you know, I just, wouldn't be a, help the public works, you know? Since we've got another, what is it, another month before we put the winter parking ban in.
Right, right. Motion to adjourn?
First.
Second.
Those in favor? Discussion. None. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Eight thirty.
Yeah. Tell Bobby Joe thank you. That was very... Now Bobby Joe, thank you, that was very nice.